Let's call this meeting to order. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Mr. Becker. It's what happens when you sit in the front chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone is here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public con- comments? Well, the guy that's behind the camera, he just said no, so we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Will, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I like the note that we're ahead of schedule on the judgment.
We'll see that. Uh, communications day.
Okay, I'll start with the donations. We have some nice donations again this month. Shopko Hometown Foundation has given the district $2,000 through their Help Us Give Back campaign. I sent out a opportunity for teachers to write a grant for that money, and I received about $13,000 of grant requests for the $2,000. They're all very good requests and hard to differentiate in terms of value to students, but I did select the LIVE program, which is a CDS program at the high school, kids transitioning from school to work, and I think it'd be a good use of that money. So, thank you to Shopko Hometown Foundation for that. This is the second year in a row we've gotten the $2,000. Target has donated once again annually to donate to our schools. Those amounts are listed there to Chain of Lakes Elementary, the Learning Center, and the high school. I think the middle school's on a different rotation for that, those monies, so they'll be getting there some other time. Breakfast Rotary Club, Wapaka Rotary Club donated an additional $700 for education grants. That $700, they went down back to the grants that were written earlier this year in addition to the, those were $10,000 worth of grants. $700 went for trek poles, which will accompany the snowshoe unit for, by, uh, we had a parent donate a French horn and fluke to the middle school band program, and then Wapaka Foundry donated a Bailey, is that correct? Bailey cut-off saw, which is much appreciated.
Would you explain to us what that is?
Yeah, it's a saw that cuts off.
It's a super huge, it's a huge metal cutting saw. Weighs almost 2,000 pounds.
Wow.
Just a very, very industrial, heavy-duty metal cutting saw. It's in a horizontal position, the saw actually uses weight to cut the material that it's
So, we could have a motion to approve or accept those donations with gratitude.
Motion to approve with appreciation. Second.
All in favor?
Then, under thank you notes, RH Liquidation donated used a forklift to move that saw and replace that saw in our school, because it was so big that we had to do that. And I believe it was Terry Solz wrote a letter explaining how the kids used some other equipment in order to build some bars and that they could leverage the equipment we have to put it in place. So, it was a whole learning experience for everybody, yes. So, thank you note was sent to them. And then Mobility For Bets Wheelchair Shop sent a thank you note to the cast of Camp of Bonding, the high school play, because they donated $50 to the Bets, Mobility For Bets Wheelchair Shop. Under recognition, National School Breakfast Week is March 2nd through the 6th.
Was.
Was March 2nd through the 6th. I thought Ms. Fluder was going to be here to talk about the breakfast program. Does anybody, John, do you know what happened at school, or Ben?
She gave our numbers at the cabinet meeting, but I can't remember what they were.
There were some promotional activities during the, that week to promote our school breakfast program, and we had participations that either doubled or tripled what we, what we do regularly because of the promotions in an effort to pick up the, the base on how many people are utilizing breakfast. And I don't, I know you're going to ask, but I, I want to say around 100 kids at middle school, is that number, son?
I think it was closer to 200 at middle school.
200?
Because they did a, as the kids entered in, they could, had to walk past kind of a bag of breakfast scenario, so the kids, and some of the kids said, "Hey, did you get a breakfast this morning?" "No." "Go get one, I want more." So, I saw some kids extras, but they did get a lot of kids going through, because as soon as they walk in the door, they pass right by, right by it. I just used wireless to keep track of the kids, and they had, it's a bag breakfast.
Were they free?
They were free last week for, for breakfast.
Free meals at Parisou too, yeah, so.
All week, free breakfast? Wow. A lot of kids take advantage of it.
Why didn't we know about this ahead of time?
Well, we could have, wouldn't it help?
No. It wasn't free for adults, it was only free for students. I wonder that, too. Free breakfast week for adults would be good.
Stay tuned.
And then, that brings us to the WSP Legal and Human Resources Conference Report. We had a board member attend that, Mr. Fair.
Okay, I'll talk a little bit about that. I'll try to keep this short and sweet. First of all, there's a ton of information that they give you for those of you who've been in the past, and I told Dave I'll leave it all with him. These are basically all of the PowerPoints and the paper copies of all of that. A couple of things that I thought were pretty interesting that maybe we should at least know about. I went to the first session on the compliant wellness program, which we all know we have, and we've listened to the reports here, but one of the things that was told to us, and remember, this was a conference on the legal aspect of the board and the human resources aspect of it, so a lot of, lot of legal things, some of which we don't need to worry much about, but the one thing that they told us, and we do do in this district, we do have health screening for all of our employees, is that correct? We're still, we're doing that?
The personal health assessment.
Personal health assessment.
It's a volunteer.
Correct, and if you go by the volun, if you participate, then your premiums are less than if you don't, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we were just told at this convention that may be unlawful to do so. Legal, there are several cases that have been litigated recently, and they haven't been favorable, but the person who gave the report to us, and I have his name here, but I can't see it right this minute, said that we should not do anything differently but to take a wait-and-see attitude, but I'm just letting you know that that may be coming down the pipe. The next session I dealt with was policies, and I talked to Dave a little bit about this. This was presented by Mr. Dan Mailen, who's a member of the WASP attorney group, and he said that, and I know we're having a policy committee meeting coming up, I'm not sure of the agenda on that, but he was very specific on districts, if you don't have updated policies on certain things, because they've been changing so rapidly, he said you might look into it. One of them was course options, which has gotten to be rather involved and somewhat confusing, but he said you need to look at your policy, everybody should see where you are as of 2015. And he also mentioned, there were some questions and answers about that, and some districts said, "Well, what if we just choose not to?" He said, "Not being a part of the course options is not an option." Okay, so you have to do something. The policy on cell phones, and I mentioned that to Dave, has changed radically, or, I shouldn't say the policy, has, the legal aspect has changed radically with some Supreme Court decisions based upon that, and he said everybody should at least look at that. There's a lot of data in here on what you can and can't do, and I'm not going to over do that.
Just, you're talking about confiscate a cellphone.
Correct.
What can we look at that's on your cellphone as evidence?
What you can look at, yeah. Even the confiscation of it has to be very clear-cut.
Right.
Very clear-cut.
Not particularly the use of cell phones in school, that's not the issue, it's what you do when you confiscate a cellphone.
Yeah, and he gave examples, and you can look at all of the things. Certain school districts have done certain things to, you know, to try to mitigate the concerns, but if you took a cellphone away from a student in the morning, for instance, for some reason, and you wanted to give them that back later in the day, that has to be very well-defined in terms of why you want to do that, can't just do it because it's a punishment. You know, there's a lot of things going on with cell phones that have changed, as I say, very, very, much so in the last couple of years. A lot that I learned about that I didn't realize, so we just need to look at it and upgrade it as best we can.
What rules are those? Where do they come from?
Court cases, I think.
Yeah, court case determines, there are many instances where a principal will confiscate a cellphone, look on the cellphone, find some criminal activity or something that, through their instant messages or whatever else they carry on their, on their cellphone, and then that information can't be used, because you didn't have a right to, if you had a right to take it, you didn't have a right to look at it, so that all needs to be balanced off.
Yeah, he, he kept referring to the Supreme Court decision, which was very, he said, which was a seven, a nine-zero one, which is very unusual, because it basically said it's private property and you cannot look at anything in there unless you have, almost like a search warrant, but that's not quite the word he used, but that idea. So, he, he was very emphatic about that. Policy on directory data, that was, that's a real hot topic, I think you, most many of you have seen in the paper, that is, if a third party says, "Hey, we want to know about all your high school seniors and get the information so we can send them some advertising" or whatever, what you can give away to the third party, what you can and what parents have, can and can't opt out of, that's a real hot topic now, it was in the newspapers and, yeah, because of the voucher system, for instance. A policy on smart snacks, I think we have one, but to look at. A policy on tech-ed excellence higher ed scholarships, which are to be given out in 2015, this spring? I didn't know we were giving them, are we giving them?
Yes.
Okay.
New this year.
New this year, and he said, you should, at least districts should be very concerned about the criteria that you're using, because it can, because it's the first time, it might be pretty volatile. Not that we are, but he's using it generally, he's talking to the people. He also said districts should look at whether or not, because some are offering a technical education diploma. Okay?
We are not.
We are not, I know, but he said some are, just so that you know that that's out there, he threw that in, I don't know, it's layered on top of your other diplomas. Anyway, then I went to a public records request and personnel records seminar, lots of data. The highlights, basically, just a couple of things. I didn't realize any person, regardless of age, can make a request, so students can request any of the material from their administrators, and you have to honor that request. Public records are generally required, they're kept seven years. Requests for records do not have to be in writing, and a person making the request does not have to identify him or herself, it could be anonymous, and we have to honor that. And board members, those of us here, if we receive an email or some other kind of request for something, we need to respond, we must respond to that, even if it's, "Well, that's the administrator's concern, I don't know anything about that," but that, that can't be our answer, our answer has to be, "I will give it to the proper person," but we can't not respond to those. And even evaluations, with certain exceptions, can be requested, so I'm learning as I go here. Then I did, went to session on employee misconduct, mostly that was about procedure, you know, who is to investigate, how to investigate, that sort of thing, there's lots of information in here, mostly for administrators, quite honestly, but nonetheless. Then the, the second-to-last session was on alternative teacher compensation, and I talked to Dave a little bit about it. The two things that every district's trying to do, which I think is as old as teaching itself, is to retain good teachers and attract good teachers, and that's not so easy to do sometimes, but those were the two issues that districts are grappling with yet. But the one thing, as I mentioned to Dave, that he, and again, the person, I don't have his name in front of me, who gave the talk said, and it used, not Wapaka's, but he used an example of a school district that has a grid that looks very similar to ours in terms of, you know, years of experience and your numbers of credits, education background in terms of moving and so forth. He said those still seem to work better than most anything out there, because a lot of districts have changed and have gotten into lots of trouble. Trouble by that doesn't mean that they aren't paying people and so on, but it's all about monitoring. There were some unbelievable examples of districts that want to monitor every activity a teacher is involved with as an extra sort of point, if you will, and then so many points equals X amount of dollars, but it's easy to talk about that, but the problem is who's going to monitor all of that? Every time a teacher takes a ticket at a wrestling match, who's taking care of the paperwork, kind of thing, and he said you have to be real careful with that before you make those kind of changes, because they, they can get to be quite troublesome. So, I said to Dave, I think we're lucky that we have the simplest, but probably the most equitable ongoing. And finally, educator effectiveness, I went to that, there was a big talk on that. Mostly it was on process and techniques, it's not to be the end-all and the be-all, but just a tool, and finally, they, they suggested that if we followed the DPI model, which I think we do in this district.
We do.
We're probably better off than trying to create our.
There are two models, ours and the CISA six model.
Right, yeah, and they said, he said DPI seems to be the most acceptable. So, that having been said, that's what I wrote down in notes, and if anybody wants to look at any of this good reading material here, you're more than welcome. I didn't get everything in here, trust me, I mean, while I'm listening to one, there's another one going on, but I have all the people working on all of it.
Except for me, though?
Yeah. You can have all of this, some of them I wrote on a little bit in there, but it's just all the data.
Thanks, Becker.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank God I didn't have to go to work.
Why didn't visit a school per se, to visit classrooms, but I did go to the Rise Together Talk on drug abuse in our community, and I went to the one during the day that the high school students attended, and it was very informative, it was very emotional. I, the students were incredibly well-behaved, you could have heard a pin drop for two hours in that auditorium. The message was great, so I, it's pretty scary stuff out there, so I hope they took some of it to heart, because it's, it's a problem in all communities, but particularly when you hear it's so prevalent in your own community, it's really scary. So, anyway, it was very informative, and I'm really glad it went.
Just for everybody's information, the evening one, I would say there were maybe 200 people there, is that a pretty good guess? Yeah, so, and that was, so that was pretty well-attended from cross-section community people, a lot of people I didn't know, so probably from other communities as well.
So, how did it end up? Are they, was there some kind of outreach, or?
Well, any of the students could go talk to, I think there were six people on a team that was out here. And it was, it was personal stories of drug addiction, drug abuse, how they got out of it, some didn't, what a struggle it is, a daily battle that isn't homeless. So, they were there to help if anybody wanted to come up and talk, and there were kids that came forward when it was done. I don't know if they left information, or if they had a website, they, they gave the kids a lot of, you know, resources that they could go to.
Yeah, for follow-up services, that some of the students, third quarter, talked with them, referred toward to our own counselors and have ongoing concerns, and, and they have made their information available for, for those students in particular, and, and they try to, try to have those students still stay in touch with them. I know that they were talking about other school districts when they were with us, they were talking about students that are struggling in other districts and what they're going to support them also.
I think one of the main points of their message was that you're not going to do it alone. If you, you're not going to do it alone. If you have a problem, that you need help, that it's, it's almost impossible to, to get over it yourself, that you need outside help.
To answer your question, I went to the community one in the evening, and I didn't do a head count, but while you said it was pretty well-attended, I was disappointed with the attendance. Anyway, having said that, the evening session for the community, they shared a lot of the same kind of personal stories, very emotional, very moving and powerful, but they were also trying to get the community to start some sort of process or program themselves, rather than necessarily depending on this group. While they certainly are available to students, they also are trying to get some grassroots movements in the communities to start, not only acknowledging the fact that problems do exist, but people that can be both, that they might reach out to if they are experiencing a situation like that. So, my thanks to Mr. Whitman with the Parks and Rec who helped facilitate getting this together, as well as Officer O'Devans. Knowing a number of students that did attend, including my own, it was, as you're describing, to them a very emotional thing. I think it really, they made a great connection with the kids from what I could tell from what various students said.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me. I attended the FFA breakfast, which was always very nice. Kids always look so nice in their uniforms, and they're polite and respectful, but they're funny, and, you know, you can just tell they're all outgoing, and food was good. Didn't seem quite as well-attended this year, was attendance down a little bit? Because I usually try to get there early and hang out, and it's just fun to be in the high school early, you know, and watch everybody come in and get started, it's just not anything I've done, excuse me, done in quite a while, so that's always fun. And then I went to the academic banquet last night, and that also was very nice, you know, just really warms your heart to see these kids that are really succeeding, you know? We hear a lot about the kids who are struggling, but there's a big group out there that are doing really well, and a lot of kids are dressed very nice, a lot of guys in shirts and ties, and, you know, just really look presentable, and food was great. Tom Chase was a speaker, he talked about having a positive influence on people's lives, and actually talked about Mr. Becker's dad, and what a great influence he had on Tom's life, that was pretty touching. So, yeah, again, it was a great night, I tend to go to the activities where they serve food. That's right.
Can you put that in the minutes?
You should have gone to breakfast last week at the elementary.
And I thought about it, but just couldn't get there, yeah.
I did not make a visit, but I just want to comment on something. They started building the house. I visit the house every day, back and forth, back and forth, and it looks like it's progressing quite rapidly now. What's the estimated date of finality?
It's a two-year process, so their, their hope is to have it fully enclosed and, and bird-tight by summer. They, you should see raptors going up later this week.
Yeah, well, I noticed there was more plywood, or always be today. Is it similar to the house that was built before? It looks about the same size.
I think it's exactly the same house.
Is it? Okay, that's a nice house.
I saw it a couple, couple weeks ago, it looked like there was just an outhouse there.
They, they built, they built walls, and they had a stack of walls sitting there, so they, they've been plugging along at it, but now all of a sudden we're seeing progress, because they're actually putting it out on, on the, on the deck.
You might be referring to the shed that we have out there, that's, that's new this year.
It'd be a very big outhouse.
It looked, it looked like it was on the, on the, on the bed of the, and it just looked like an outhouse there.
You know, I've got to give, give some credit to David Larson and his crew, they were out there on some really nasty days, some very cold, wind chill, I'm sure the elementary didn't send their students out for recess on those days, but those guys went out and did a little bit of initial construction at the end, and, and now they're getting a little bit of, you know, that, that other side of the coin, where they're out there in perfect weather building and really enjoying their time out there, so, but they, they went out when I wouldn't have been out there, I'll tell you.
It's fun for those of us who drive back and forth every day, just to see the progression.
I also went to the breakfast, it was very good, it's kind of, just a neat, neat way to start the day and see all those kids in and out, and you just love, they love talking to you, and you feel like, like you're their best friend. The food was good.
Well, they always got a wine, but they got up so early to do the breakfast, wah, wah, wah.
I also went to the Learning Center today, and it, it's amazing, the, the parking situation, it has been cleaned up so much better, you know, the, it's, you have to be real careful when you're going around, because you might go out the wrong way until you see that sign that says, "Not this way." But when I left about, well, it was 3:00, 3:05, there were a ton of cars, and it was very, you know, it seemed very safe to me, and so I think that's a, a good lesson for us, and it's, I think it's a safety factor for the kids and, and the parents. I spent a little time with some of the teachers, and it was interesting, I, when I got there, I got, I saw Mary Felth, and she had these little kids, and it was just starting, and they were in the gym, and those kids were wild, I mean, this big, and she said, "Okay, now get the cake, or the, the things that, to keep the kids up, they, so that they could run around," and she said, "Okay, everybody run around," and they all had to go around this thing, and I looked at her, I said, you know, "What are you, what's that for?" She says, "These kids are so wild at this point in time, you got to get their, got to slow them down a little."
Meaning March?
Uh-huh. No.
Late in the day.
Or late in the day.
Late in the day, and they went around and around and around, and all of a sudden they're, they're up. And she looked at me, said, "No, I got them where I want them."
Is that a takeaway for any of your classes?
It's amazing, as you walk in the halls, I was stopped by a couple of teachers that are fed up with testing. So much testing, and it just, it, and to, to each one of them, they say it's taking away from their main job, because it's, it's just too much for the kids, for the teachers, and it's taking away quality time for the kids, and I don't know what, what you do about it, but I suppose we're, we don't have a choice.
It's out of our control, but there's some good news today.
I heard that.
Did you?
Badger test?
Part of the badger test is being waived this year. One of the parts that gave us the most trouble was scheduling. Did you say around two and a half hours or something like that?
Well, it had a big part of, one of the performance tasks, which was a multi-day test, where they would get a preview in the classroom and then come back the next day test.
So, DPI has, has been listening, and I think they've heard that loud and clear and were able to delete at least that part, so that, that was good news. But there's no question that testing is the, you know, the key word this year, and it's not something we control. You remember, a long time ago, the whole issue of testing came up, because people said, "Well, how do we know our kids in Wisconsin are doing well?" Because we'd keep saying, "Well, they are doing well, look at their performance in college, look at their performance in, in the workforce, we think they're doing well." We think they're doing well." And people said, "But we're not doing as well as the Japanese. We're not doing as well as the Chinese." And you said, "Okay, well, how do we, how do we know that? Well, let's test them and let's find out." So we can get a test, we can measure. Well, then all of a sudden the tests aren't exactly the same. So how do you measure that? Then we end up getting a Common Core curriculum and test on that Common Core. So every state in the United States has the same test, same. And now that's being thrown out the window where the test is one year. The governor's proposed that we remove the testing from the budget for the following year. This will be a one-and-done test if the governor's budget goes through. And you're right back to the question again on how do we know that our kids are doing well? And it might be a little bit cynical, but there might be a way, a purpose, a reason out there to say, "We don't want to know our kids are doing well. We just want to be able to say that they gotta do better, so let's not compare." And I don't know where we're going with it, but it's out of our control. Testing came about when we had the no child left behind and it was set up so that every school after a period of, I think it's 13 years, would be failing. Because remember, we all would be 100% proficient in advanced? It's impossible. We can't be. So we had to get out from under that in order to be not considered a failing school. So we had to write for a waiver to the federal government and we got that waiver. Wisconsin did. That waiver included educator effectiveness, which you've heard a lot about. The waiver included the badger exam. It included a common curriculum for schools in Wisconsin. And that's how we got to where we are today. And it's this test on top of test on top of test. The educator effectiveness requires us to test kids at least three times through the, throughout the year. A map test in the beginning to find out where they start the year. A map test in the middle will find out if they're on track or not to reach their goal. So that when we test at the end of the year, we know whether they've met their goal or not. So it's, it is, it's tested.
What happened to just looking at the tests that the kids take after they finish a unit of something? And see where they're at? I mean, that's how we did it in the old days.
That's how we did, but it's, it's comparison. How, how do we know that while we're testing them on that test? It's not the same test the kids in Clintonville take or the kids in Madison take. So how do we know that our tests aren't easier than their tests when you measure that one?
I don't know.
It is a dilemma.
Yeah.
And we talk about performance exams. Okay, let us teach, let's judge on how, how they do when they get out of, out of our schools. How are they doing when they get to college? How are they doing in the workforce? But some people are intent on saying we need to know every step of the way and be able to compare. And I had a good discussion with Congressman Ribble on, on this because he talked about, was that a presentation? He talked about how our United States is 27th in the world in, in education and we've fallen. And I asked him, "Show me the data. What, what are you basing that on? Are you basing it on a comparison of us against China? Well, is, is China testing the same kids that we're testing? And are they using the same tests that we're testing?" He says, "Well, I don't know." I said, "Then how can you make that statement?" It's hard to understand for people who aren't living this world every day. In their world, it's all about quality control and make sure that everything is, is the same. And it's very different when you're working with, with people.
Seems like we're going overboard.
The pendulum has swung. It will swing a little bit further yet to the testing before there's enough kickback and we say we need time to teach rather than time for testing. I mean, all the time lost because we're testing kids and then we're not able to teach. Pendulum will swing back. It'll take time.
Are we mandated for all these tests?
Yes. In one form or another, either through no child left behind, through the Wisconsin Legislature or through this educator effectiveness, we have to do these tests in order to measure what we're being evaluated on.
What, what would happen if you didn't do something?
Your money would. Money might dry up.
At least for our school.
That's the problem.
Right.
It isn't just giving the test, it's the money that follows. If it was just giving the test, that's one thing.
Such an incredible desire for information. People are just crazy for information that they forget what the purpose of school is.
Well, and as Dave has said many times to the staff and reminded you that, and you're only looking at four basic core areas.
Right.
You know, we're not talking about the music and, and Jen's classes and other. You know, they're, they're in a whole different spectrum out there, but yet many of our students, that's their livelihood, that's what they want.
Right.
They somehow don't count and that's what's so insidious about it all.
Yep, depending on where Common Core goes, the premise of Common Core was that that would be extending two degrees to all disciplines, so. The next time you have that conversation, have them check to see. I recently heard a report on academics in China and it's not going quite as well as it used to. So might refer some on, to check some stuff.
I don't think it was ever going as well as people thought it was going for the entire population.
Well, not to mention that China's a homogeneous grouping. I mean, it's basically not an immigrant society. You know, there are only about four countries in the world. We should really compare ourselves to Canada, the United States, Australia, maybe one other out there. There, we're all immigrant countries comparatively, but we don't. We do it all, the ones that are virtually the same. And that's pretty hard to compare here.
If you want somebody from Australia to go to a school visit, you compare it. That'd be interesting.
But you talk about the extending it to other subject areas. Educator effectiveness is requiring our FIAE, our FIAE or MAP, I'm sorry, FIAE, music, non-core teachers to play a role in improving our reading and math scores for, for all, all our kids. So how can FIAE contribute to improve reading scores and improve math scores? There are ways to do it, but there are other reasons for having FIAE or having music to do that.
It's just a problem.
It is a, it is a.
And there's not a lot we can do about it, is what I think.
Well, it's just being overthought. There are people who need to get different jobs instead of trying to figure all of this out. I have a nephew-in-law from China and it ain't pretty over there. They gotta work on pollution and corrupt government and all kinds of things. So we're actually doing pretty well. Getting on, our kids might be a little above average, but our skies are fairly clean and government isn't too corrupt.
We can't lose our focus on educating the whole child. And I say that every time budget comes around. Many districts are, by being forced to, you put your money where you're being measured. So you're going to hire core teachers at the risk of cutting out librarians and cutting out music teachers and cutting out those programs or at least lessening those programs. And I think you and School District Waupaca has done a pretty good job of saying, "We're not going to lose sight of those other programs that make the whole child." And I think that's something we need to be proud of in Waupaca.
Good.
I came across a student yesterday in one of the grocery stores. They couldn't stop talking about soloism this past weekend and how incredible it was. And thank you so much that we have music and the arts in our schools and whatever. And I thought, wow, this is great because this is certainly a young lady that's headed in that direction. Maybe in other school districts wouldn't get that.
Committee action and reports. Okay, future dates. There are a number of, let me just get this up here. Dates that I've added into what we had before, but here we go. March 18th is the WSB Day at the Capitol, an annual event. If anyone's interested in going, let me know. Tuesday, March 24th is the select date for the expulsion hearing at 6:00 PM in this room. Tuesday, April 7th is election day. Monday, April 13th will be our policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM in this room. And I sent everybody email regarding expulsion hearing date and the policy committee date earlier today. And then our regular board meeting on Tuesday, April 14th at 5:45 here. So all those other dates that you had penciled in or tentatively put in your calendars, let's get rid of them. These are the, the two final ones. It's a busy time for everybody and to have people available, it's tough.
Can you just take that out and send it to each district?
I can do that. The CISA service contract for 2015-16, like other school districts, they have to hire their teachers for next year. So they ask for approval with contracts around this time of the year. We have a couple of main items. We contract with CISA. One of courses is our WCCS, so Waupaca County Charter School. They manage and run that school. So that's the biggest part of our contract. The second part is, relates to instruction and writing curriculum, PBI 34 and educator effectiveness items. We don't have a large exceptional ed contract with CISA because we have our own director and we maintain most of our own programs. And in fact, we are the service provider for some of the schools around here, their CISA programs. So that's not a big portion of it, but you'll see some add-ons to the contract just to assist us in areas that we don't do very often or just small. We, professionals are small parts of the service.
Dave, I looked at the contract online here earlier and, and is there really any difference between 2015, 16 and 1450?
No. One part, they combined two pieces together and just call it one. But no, in terms of what we're contracting with, there's, I don't think there's any difference.
Do we have four students that return to school frequently?
Yes.
That goes in and out 12, but currently it's four. We usually have four there and some on the waiting list. So that if one does come back, and they do, they come back to school, then we're moving another one over there. I think it's been very effective since we've gone to the day treatment portion or adding day treatment services to that contract. And I've, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think it's a model for the rest of the state to number one, to fund it through Medicaid funding as well as providing those services. Those kids need those services, that's why they're there. A very successful program. Better than it was, I think. So we'll need a motion to approve that contract.
How do we approve the contract?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Board monitor, monitor. Or should we wait for five minutes until it gets to be 6:30?
Let's go ahead.
Okay, we'll do it.
As, as you know, annually in the month of March, we monitor our ends policy relative to academic achievement, citizenship and responsibility. We used to have our own survey that we gave kids and a number of years ago we decided that we needed something else more consistent and had better, better questions. So we went to Lynn's website and it's DPI website that provides a model school climate survey. And it's all done on the, on the computer by kids. And then we're able to aggregate the data sometimes from male to female. Those who receive mostly As and mostly Cs.
Anything you want.
Oh, you can, from any, any grade. So you can look at it in different ways. So I've asked the principals to do is go through the results, give a little report on what might surprise them or what they might be pleased with, any changes that might have occurred from one year to the other. I, I would suggest that one of the things we're looking at is the PBIS implementation through, throughout our schools should eventually be having effect, an effect on these climate surveys. I think we can, you'll find out, we see it in little, little bits and pieces so far, but eventually that'd be one way to measure, this will be one way to measure the effect of putting our resources into PBIS. So with their first and second grade students, rather than them doing it on the computer, we have the guidance counselors meet with them and read some of the questions to them. The kids give a thumbs up, thumbs down, and we record it that way. And there is, that report was on, online. You're able to see that. John, Rhonda?
Yeah. You had a copy of it, the first grade do thumbs up, thumbs down. Second grade put an X in the box, but it's read out loud to them. So not much changes from last year. The first and second grade from Chain and WLC were combined in those results. And that was, that's always 100% in both first and second grade is students in our school are taught about respect and kindness. They all agree 100%. They definitely are taught that way. But almost everything else is in the high 90s and some of the comments are definitely reflecting the PBS, especially at the WLC. There's a lot of, "I wish everyone followed the Rascal Way. I live the Rascal Way. I am respectful and you can be respectful too." And just really cute comments.
Good. Take the questions of the first and second grade survey.
I wanted to know what the Rascal Way means to students.
Well, each student from pre-kindergarten all the way through fourth grade, it means to be respectful, responsible, safe and prepared. There's a matrix that, that's located in every classroom and the teachers do teach to that matrix to tell them what it looks like in the classroom, what it looks like in the hallway, the bathroom, the lunchroom and the playground. And so they're being taught respectful, responsible, safe and prepared, what that looks like in each individual setting.
John, didn't you in the beginning of the year have videos of kids modeling that behavior?
We have done that the last few years. Summer school, Bennett had a class where the kids put together some of the videos showing and modeling exactly what it looks like to be quiet in the hallway or using a level one voice or a zero voice, or what it's like to be quick, clean and quiet as you're washing up, coming out of the bathroom and going up and down the stairs, what the Rascal Way would look like for safety purposes going up and downstairs. So we do have videos for a number of different situations, including the lunchroom and what it looks like to, to pick a meal and tray that is healthy and what's expected to be responsible as far as eating lunch. So we have it in all, all settings of the building. We have videos for that.
And we're hoping the Rascal Way turns out to be the Panther Way and turns out to be the conflict way. Consistent language, consistent behaviors throughout our entire district.
Do you have it for riding the bus too?
We do, yes. And you have videos for that as well, the model behavior on the bus.
Dr. Special, you can't forget the Waupaca Way.
And the Waupaca Way, which is community. Eventually, we would like to spread this out into the Waupaca Way so that when people go to a restaurant and have a place mat, people will say, "Waupaca Way. Be safe, be responsible, be prepared," et cetera. And we're working on that through the Community Health Action Team, the State Care, Community Wide Team has PBIS as a target, a goal for, for the community. So it is bigger than just our, our schools. And I think it needs to be. It needs to be in parents, it needs to be houses, as well as places of business and others.
How do we get into State Care? Do you know anybody that?
No, I don't think, no. It must have been just a coincidence.
I think it's a great idea.
But State Care is going to put money, is putting money and resources behind this as well. But yeah, it is a good idea.
Yeah.
John?
Sure.
I'll report on the 31 questions that we asked, third, fourth, fifth and sixth graders. They all took the same survey. So even though fifth and sixth of the middle school, I'll touch base on that. When we looked at the results, although pleased with them, we, we approved in the majority of the results from last year to this year. I, I caution, the improvements are very small, less than a tenth of a point in some of the questions. And where we went down in some of the areas, it was about the same, real small. If you took the graphs and laid them on top of each other, they would be almost identical from one year to the next. The one area that I did look at was the comments. The three questions are, "What do you like about your school?", "What don't you like about your school", and "What questions do you wish we would have asked?" And in years past, we, I noticed there were more comments on, on bullying and I wish there weren't bullies or I wish people would treat each other better. In this particular survey, the number of comments about bullying and about kids treating each other disrespectfully are down compared to, down quite a bit compared to the years past. So although the graph looks relatively identical to a year ago, we are seeing less comments about behaviors out on the playground, especially with, with the bullying. And I like to say that, you know, lessons taught by Mr. Bennett and our school, school counselors, they go into the classrooms and they have PBIS lessons on the Rascal Way. And each teacher has them come into their room at least once a week or every other week at a minimum. And they actually do have our lessons with each classroom about the Rascal Way and what that looks like at third and fourth. And I think what we're finding is students may be finding socially acceptable ways to deal with conflict resolution. And I think what we're finding is students may be finding socially acceptable ways to deal with conflict resolution. Where before it was just kind of a bullying game, now we're pulling the kids in and asking them to work it out with adult supervision as to how do they want to work out the problem, how can they work out the problem? And I think the kids are starting to figure that out on their own a little bit more than they have in the past, and I think that's a positive thing.
John, what, tell us what you're looking at, which, we've got a number of handouts here.
Steve, fourteen fifteen graphic looks similar to this.
One says grade nine and twelve, those are probably the things that I'm involved.
One says As and Bs.
The other says As and Bs, I don't know that we have what you're looking at.
Okay, I thought maybe you would have with the board packet, put it in there, but then you won't have it in your place. But I can get a copy for everybody for that.
Okay. So looking at the graph that we do have, you're saying it's very similar in terms of movement, it looks almost identical to last year's with just?
If you would lay the graphs on top of each other, you'd notice very little.
So what questions did they wish you would have asked?
They were all over the place. I can, I can show you, I'll read just a couple of them, there's, there's quite a few of them. Do you like football, how many kids are at the school, none? If you have too much homework, if we have too much homework, are we good at sports? How I feel about school? Do you like your school? Do you like lunches at our, do we like lunches at our school, things of that nature? Can we have more recess? Those types of things. Be important.
Age old question. Yeah, can we have a shorter year, a longer summer?
John, I know that you suggested that, maybe you said this, I wasn't paying attention, but this year there are fewer comments about bullying at school.
Yes, and there were, from one, from one year to the next, there was a definite decline in the number of comments about bullying.
I know last year at this time, that got our attention, all the work we had done about bullying and yet there were a lot of comments about it. Now it's probably taking effect or hitting home that it is less.
Yeah, I know I speak for myself on this, but you hold your breath when you, these results come back and the comments come back because you'd like to see some improvements in those areas. And that was one area where I did see improvements, where maybe not so much in the graph, but in the comments, I did see some improvements.
The middle school survey, we split it in two directions. Fifth and sixth grade went down with the elementary school, seventh, eighth grade went up to the high school. And unfortunately for the fifth and sixth grade, we couldn't split apart the data to see how fifth and sixth grade really looked at things on the graph. So John kind of reported about everything, but that does include up through sixth grade. For seventh and eighth grade, I was able to pull those survey results out by grade level. And they're very similar to the past years. Some of the things that we like to see, seventh, eighth grade both agree that they feel safe at school. That always makes you feel good because you've worked very hard, you guys spend a lot of money to make schools be safer. They are seeing that teachers, administrators, supervisors and office staff treat them all with respect. And so that's another good thing that they're, they're being modeled respect, whether they show it to each other, the different story when they act a little later. They do accept responsibility for what they learn. And one of the things that they do, you know, doing well in school makes them feel good about themselves and that they are doing their best. And the teachers expect the students to do their best, that they're, the teachers, kind of some of the negative things. School is not fun, that's kind of middle of the road kind of thing for them. They feel school is kind of a neutral place and they feel that teachers kind of, just kind of make school fun, not really a ton of fun. I don't know about most of us, but school isn't always the most fun place to be. At least they don't say that it's horrible, so they're there to learn, we try to make it as good as we can. They do seem to have fun, they are enjoying things. And we also need to focus on those other things. Some of the things that they, we see a big jump in our eighth grade, that they feel they are spending more time on computers and that they are ready for the real world in those technology skills. They feel that overall seventh and eighth grade are being told the things and shown the things and taught the things that are going to make them successful in the real world. They all agree. The only thing that's a little bit of a dip is their ability to present the information. And that's still a positive side of things, but that's the one little bit lower. Otherwise, the things that we always see, they don't have choice on what they have to learn. We have the curriculum that we need to teach, we teach those things. They have a hard time realizing what they're learning is relevant in real life. Even though they feel prepared for the real life, they don't see how what they're learning is relevant. And like I said, school is fun, that's one of those negative things, but just slightly. So overall, it's a very positive survey for seventh and eighth grade. I think we made the comment before that the older they get, the more cynical they get. As they seem to go down towards the neutral, towards the negative side of the older grades. And it's evident between seventh and eighth grade as well, we've said that before in the past years.
Were you able to, was the bullying subject addressed directly with seventh and eighth grade?
Their comments, their students disrespect other students who are different than they are. And that was both of them, seventh, eighth grade marked it about the same, just to the disagreed side of neutral.
But I'm noticing on the comments here, there are quite a few, and I, I just bring this up because we just did a lesson on it.
We work on, you know, just like the elementary school is working on PBIS lessons for it, so is the middle school. We have videos at the start of the year. Unfortunately, with middle school age, the kids are getting their cell phones. They're not necessarily sure how to use them all appropriately, so you start to see more of that bullying that happens via cell phones, via Facebook. We have dealt with less of that this year in the school, but doesn't matter, doesn't mean that it's not happening outside of school.
How about, are there policies for how teachers handle it?
Teachers handle bullying?
Bullying, if a student comes to a teacher, what?
We have started a new program, Chad Britzel, our student's, his SLO is about how can we get the, this bullying idea kind of changed around. And so he presented a program and we're calling Stop the Dis. And so if you see somebody who is being disrespected, and so we're trying to change the wording from bullying to disrespect, because bullying is a word that adds power. So we say if you see disrespect, say stop the dis. You can say if it's coming to you, if you see it to somebody else, and just walk away. You know, we say if you see this, no, whatever you're doing is not being appreciated, stop doing that. And the kids initially kind of try to make it a little bit of a joke, hey, stop the dis, hey, stop the dis. But it's also being used and reinforced that that's a way to get the word out without having to put up a big stink and make it a fight. You know, you had to start somewhere, we started that, we started this second semester and we're doing lessons within our advisor vises on Fridays that work with that as well. So it's an ongoing process and, you know, it took years to get to this point, it's going to take years to get us away from this. And I don't think that we'll ever get a hundred percent away because unfortunately, kids will be kids and they'll do things that aren't good and other kids look at it as, you know, why are you picking on me and those things. But we work hard on teaching them to, to tolerate. Unfortunately, that's, we can't work all the way towards acceptance yet, you gotta start somewhere. But tolerance is one of the places we're starting, understanding that, sort of kind of deal with it and move on and work on getting a resolution in place as well.
Ben, as a follow-up, is there consistency among how teachers handle bullying when they see it or disrespect when they see it?
They, I, I think that we, we try to be consistent, but everybody handles things a little bit differently. Maybe they don't see it as bullying. You know, we all see things a little bit this way, that way. If we're, it is reported to us, I think we handle it that way, as far as seeing it all, that's the big question. What, what, what do your eyes see versus my eyes see and do you see it the same?
Do teachers try to get involved or do they tell the students to work it out themselves?
Oftentimes, they will tell them to knock it off and then see, you know, can we empower the students to handle it? Try to teach them techniques and skills, because it's most of what it is, is they just don't know how to deal with each other yet. And they're not figuring out how to handle those situations.
How do you see some of this Stop the Dis carrying forward?
Right now, it's still, it's still a new, I think it needs to catch hold yet, but I know that we're working on it. Like I said, it was just introduced sort of end of January. And so it's, it's taking time to get that program going. Like I said, we are doing teaching during Friday lessons, advisor vises, and trying to get, you know, the idea of what is bullying? What is disrespect, what is respect? Kind of going that way.
If it, if there is someone that is persistently bullying another student, what are the repercussions of that? What, what, how do they get dis?
They get in-school suspensions, they can get out-of-school suspensions, constantly trying to work with them on understanding why they are doing that, what is the rationale behind it? You know, that we have some other programs, we try to do positive attention with them, what we call using our power card, check in, check out. So trying to replace, you know, figure out what is behind why they're doing this. So that's, every behavior has a rationale behind it, we need to figure out what that rationale is.
Question. I think it's so interesting, the attention that you're giving to the terminology and the words that you're using to describe things. And actually, my question relates to that a little bit. Are the students referring to the real world and real life, is that language that they use?
You know, it's in the survey and I think they think of it in terms of how does this impact, you know, when I go home, am I using the stuff that they're teaching me in school? And that's, I think, where they see.
Is that in the comments or in the survey questions?
Survey question.
I, I actually have a little bit of a concern about that because the moment, I mean, the moments that they're living in school, that's not an imaginary world, that's the real world. And to make that kind of separation, others, not just in this instance, I guess I'll have to look into the survey to say, maybe there's another way to look at it. And I think we spend a lot of time looking toward the future, building for the future, but the moment is, you know, that's life at that moment. Anyway, that's.
A lot of their days spent in that moment.
Well, all of our days are spent.
But I mean, for a young child.
Oh, yes.
It's reality, it's their life, yeah.
And following up on that question though, is there any way to manipulate the questions in the survey? We can't say, let's take this one out and put this one in, you can't do, it's all or nothing.
Survey is just, it's there.
And where does it come from?
FBI.
Yeah, okay.
It's NCRL, the Northeast Regional, puts it together and DPI has adopted it. And they use the results of the, all the different schools in Wisconsin that take this survey and put them together in terms of patterns across school districts.
So basically, they can't, you can't mix and match questions because then?
Because that would destroy the copper bill.
Look, it's easy enough to write and announce.
High school.
All right, a lot of what was covered in high school has already been said, but let me kind of set you through a few of the things I gave you. First of all, I printed out all thirty-four pages from back of the comments, the narrative that answered those three questions. You know, you learn a lot by reading that narrative, it's depressing, I shared that with you last year, I think, it's hard to read through. And the, I guess my overall impression is the, our food service took a bigger hit this year than they've ever taken. I've always said that it falls into thirds. And in previous years, I've said, a third of the comments had to do with food service, a third of the comments had to do with their teachers and, and the school environment. And then a third has to do with kids being decent to each other, you know? This year, I'd say a half is about food service and students not liking the food, not liking the portions, just, it's really hit hard this year. Interestingly enough, freshmen like the choices of food. If you look at the likes, they really like the fact that they get six choices every day, but that disappears pretty quickly. Even in the freshman responses of what they don't like, they talk about a varsity football player getting three chicken nuggets for their lunch and, you know, those kind of things. So you'll see a lot, a lot, a lot of comments about food in there. And even the questions, what do you wish we would have asked, I would say that half of those say, ask us about lunch. So that's really, really, really what we're seeing. The thing I'm seeing less of is, in the past, I've always been a little bit overwhelmed with students treating other students not so well. You know, that, that was a pretty strong theme and it's still a theme, but this year's twist is that there are more students talking about sexual orientations. Talking about students who have alternative lifestyles and, and, you know, how, how they're not accepted well at school, those kind of things. So that's, that's a little bit different than we've seen before. The other theme I've not seen so much before is that testing theme, it's really coming out strong. And, you know, testing is really, really overtaking our lives at the high school. ACT testing was last week, it took us more than four days for some of our special education students to finish the ACT test. That's time off task, time that they couldn't learn. And we're looking forward to the aspire for freshmen and the aspire for sophomores and then MAPS testing for freshmen and sophomores also, that's yet to come this spring. So there were students that talked about, hey, what's with all the testing? But, so that, that's the comments, that big package. Then I, I put together two different comparison surveys. One is, and they're both colored sheets, one is grade nine to grade twelve. And you'll notice that they, they really do parallel each other quite a bit with grade nine being slightly more positive than grade twelve for most areas. The areas that Carl and I had a lot of fun looking at were the areas where they switched positions. I'd like to learn number twenty-five, the seniors stepped into a more agreeable tone there than the freshmen, but. So just kind of interesting to look at those things. Then the other comparison I did was mostly As to mostly Bs. And you would assume coming into it that, that those two groups of students are going to see the world a lot differently. And again, we look for the, the areas where there's the greatest disparity between the two. On the, on the front page, you can see number eighteen, I feel successful at school, while obviously, kids who are getting As are going to feel much more successful than kids getting Bs. So interesting to look at. And the last packet I give you is in black and white and it has a big graph on the front of it. And that's just our, our results from the last two years, if you want to lay them, lay the results down on top of each other and compare your work and to do that. We're not seeing huge changes though in, in how the students are talking. I think John talked about how you really see minuscule changes in, in how the students are rating themselves on those sixty-five questions. So very interesting reading, always hard to work through. It doesn't help that it's in such a small font, as an old guy that needs glasses to be able to read that stuff, but it's, it's a little tough to go through. Sometimes we have kids that are not taking the survey seriously, they're saying silly things, there's bad language that you have to go through and have to ignore. But I'd say seventy-five percent of respondents were, you know, speaking from their heart, being decent, using decent language.
A lot of the comments are sort of intangible, like, you know, my relationship to teachers or my friends, like you mentioned, you know, those are hard to do. But the one that is tangible for us is the whole food business. Is there anything that can be done there to be a little bit more helpful? I mean, I'm not trying to say our food service is, is at fault, I mean, I'm no different than anybody else as far as, you know, just observing. But I mean, isn't, is there anything that we can at least on a perspective basis look like we're trying to help there?
Well, I tell you, the, the ladies in our high school are doing fantastic things to try and get students in touch with lunch. They, they've done things like pre-packaging salads and asking students, what do you want to see in your salad? They've done some very, very different things, they've done a Thai peanut salad and they've done some, some very trendy things. They've done several surveys of students, when they come through the lines, they give them a piece of paper and they say, you know, what do you like about this, 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 this? And they're asking their input. They, they have a sandwich board that they set out and they try and advertise some of their, their new. They, they have a sandwich war that they set out, and they try and advertise some of their, their new things. They'll have trials. They had hummus one day, that they had out for kids to be, try hummus and see what that was like. So I, I think they're trying really, really hard.
Is it more of the volume than anything?
I think volume is a big concern. And part of it is, a lot of these kids, they come to school by 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. Some will take breakfast, a large percentage, we're trying to increase those numbers, and then kids are there until 7 o'clock at night. So that one meal at lunch is carrying them over until we get home at 7, 7:30, because they don't bring a lunch or something. And so I think it's more of the portions. We have our principals meeting our conference, and so I get around to the different sites, and we have lunch there. And I, I like to challenge the kids to go to some of the other schools, so they have something to compare and contrast. They're just making a judgment about, I think, more portions than anything. I think there's, the meals are pretty good that they're receiving.
And as Darke told us earlier. I've always thought that's been great, I just, I'm just curious as to why they're, what they're concerned. Must be just the volume, because it's not the quality.
They're restricted by the federal government, too, I think.
I don't, I don't have a strong.
But don't they have the option to buy a second on turf?
Yeah, but that's a cost, I owe for some kids, and they just have an extra 55 cents for this, and 75 cents for that.
Well, when you have a kid that's playing football or running cross country or something, they're hungry.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't think our machines have the stuff in it that they used to, that they could throw up on, like after school, if they had a couple minutes between school and sports. And I can understand, because I've been in that, you know, position.
And on the food side, isn't there a lot more being wasted in the elementary school? I, I was there working, I was appalled at what was being thrown out.
Yeah, a lot of food that is thrown out there is a lot, free day.
Both either of them, because they don't like the vegetables and the.
Right, the teachers have to make sure they're taking what they need to take, to stay in regulations, and making sure that they're still bringing them on the plate.
There's so much.
I think our teachers do a good job, too, where they study as to what, what kids are buying to eat. I heard the chicken sandwich is the biggest seller right now, so they offer that multiple times throughout the week. So it's not, they're seeing what kids really are being attracted to, and they're trying to provide that. But they're, when they're actually in purchase, too, what commodities are out there.
Since we're talking about this, is there, there's been quite a bit in the post crescent about schools that are offering free lunch for all kids? And I don't know if it's based on having a high percentage of free and reduced, is that anything?
You have to meet a certain threshold of your entire district, or of all the schools combined, and we don't reach that threshold to be able to do that.
That was the case for breakfast at summer school, wasn't it?
Well, or lunch at summer school, or lunch for all students during the summertime period.
Right.
But there are, there may be some, I don't want to say loopholes, but ways to get. We have been told that we might have the ability to serve lunch over the summer months, based on our comments. So that's contrary to what we've heard in the past, that we were told that, so we're looking into it.
Do you know what our threshold is? I mean, that threshold, not ours, but that threshold is.
Carl, was it 50%?
I think it is close to 50.
Or 40?
Only, only in pockets. Our overall average is.
About 39.
39. But we are close to 50 at some, like chain school, or when you disaggregate by different areas.
But if you take the whole thing together, I understand.
Are you seeing any changes in attendance?
No, we haven't really looked at that. Attendance is tough. We are struggling with, with particular students. And it's painfully aware to us during testing periods. ACT tests, you know, we, we're trying to get to that, that magic 95% of students tested. And we're not quite there yet. Our initial tests, we had some students that were absent for. And, you know, when you're picking two days out of the entire year to test students, and then you're gonna give two more days where we can test them again, we're gonna, we're gonna miss some kids, without a doubt. We're doing everything we can to not miss those students. But we have some students who are habitually truant, and you can only find them so much. And, and then we don't have anything left to bring them back. So we do have a few kids who are on our books. Sometimes we even know where they are, but we're not able to get them to come through our doors. And they're not 18 years old yet. So we're working hard on that, but we just don't have the resources, we don't have the teeth. They're not being taken to court, it's not, it's just, we're working hard on it, but we're not making good progress.
I think this year has also been hit harder with, you know, middle school, we've had lots more kids with concussions. So they've been out of school for a week plus at a time. The flu went through, and we went, in one day, we went from 11% out to 15% out during the day. Because they were dropping like flies, and they're gone for five, six days. We saw a lot more absences for that this year. We have our ritual truants as well. One of the problems in middle school is that they cannot be cited for truancy until they're age 12. So that's somewhere in the sixth grade to seventh grade range. We have fifth grade kids who, you push on their parents and try to get them to give them to school. They've been, parents have been cited for contributing to truancy. And sometimes.
Right.
I'm sure John has some of the same kind of issues at elementary school.
I ran, at the semester when I ran a attendance report, and assuming that we ran it correctly, with campus being, it was the first time we went through that, right, 96% of the elementary, which is consistent to our school district report that we get annually. But we do see the same issues where we have to work with the parents, and Aunt Collins, and the school counselors, and the school nurse. And I work with the families in trying to get them to come to school, and we've had to require doctors' notes for students. And we have cited student, parents for contributing to truancy when everything else fails. We try not to do that. We know that, you know, the pre-reduced of the elementaries are on 45%, I just ran that for a state report. So it, it's tough, and we try to work with them, and we're flexible when we can be. But there's a handful of people that just struggle getting to the kids to school.
Rob, do you think there are, is it possible that some of those kids who were absent for the ACT were absent intentionally?
We, we saw our absence go way up the second day of testing. First day of testing, we had six students who didn't test for the ACT. There's a second test that you have to do, it's called the word keys. And it's a 2:45 minute test, so it takes from 8 o'clock until 11:30 on the second day. And we had 13 not show up on that second day. We did get some phone calls from parents who said, my, my student worked hard, I'm not sending them today. You know, so we did have a few parents that said, we're not doing this two days in a row. And so our hope is that on the 19th, or the 18th of March, those kids will show up. We only get one day to test them, though. We can't, they're here now, but we can't test them, we have to wait until the 18th to test them. So that's part of the structure that the state put in place for us, everyone has to do it on the same day.
Is the ACT done electronically?
No.
It's still done with a book and a pencil?
Book and a pencil, yeah. And you have to test all of the students at the same time. The aspire test, which is an ACT precursor, has to be done on computer. And that's very, very difficult for us, because we're talking about, you know, 160, 170 students being on computers at the same time in our building. And, and across the state, they don't have to be on the same day, not like the ACT. But you'll have, you know, 60% of all schools testing on the aspire on the same day, and then the state will have data problems.
On a different note of attendance, have you noticed many of the students are missing because parents are taking them out for family trips and things?
I have that a team. I don't have many attendance issues that are based on truancy or just not showing up. It's mostly pre-arranged, long, two-week, Mexico or Caribbean, sometimes foreign countries, so.
Same, most of the attendance issues are illness or pre-arranged absences in parents.
I was talking to some teachers recently, and one said she had four students up. And it, it was really hard to juggle, make up work, and, you know, work to take along, and be, get them all back, and up to smuff, and whatever. So it, I mean, their point was that it's kind of a problem. Did you see that?
When we had that 15% out, seventh grade was hit hard. And there was, you know, seven, eight kids in every classroom that were gone, out of 25 kids. As you talk about a quarter of the kids gone, it's hard to say, okay, we're gonna cover all this, when you know, you know, tomorrow I may lose a few more kids, we'll go back. There were a couple weeks that were just really horrid with absences. And it does, it hinders the education for those who are, are left in school, because they don't have the same, you know, the teachers are kind of, how can I cover material for these kids and those kids? It's, it's tough.
Well, that problem has been, of course, age-old with teachers, you know. But, but what really has exacerbated the problem is, then you have to have certain days, you have tests, only that day. So if you had some absences leading up to that, you know, in the old days, you didn't have that test date on that day. You'd say, okay, well, we've had some absences, we'll push it back a week, catch everybody up. Can't do that.
The window was, well, for us, for the Badger game, the window does go for about a month. In some cases, a month and a half, versus three days. But we're blessed that way. If we get too messy, we can make it up.
Unfortunately, I think it's next year, or actually, next year, for a week's vacation. So hopefully, some parents will consider utilizing that week.
Is that a problem at the high school, too?
Not nearly so much. I think students are motivated to be there, they lobbied their parents to say, we can't be gone that long, I can't catch up, that's too much for me. We also still do a trip in the spring with our music department, that I think some kids are saying, I can't miss more than that. I mean, that's, that's all I can do. So we still have our little, you know, over the Easter weekend coming up. We'll see how that, if parents will extend that to do vacations and things. But it's not nearly the problem that it is at the lower level.
I, I would agree with that. When I had seniors, it was pretty much, I had very few of them who went off, quote unquote, on their own, either with parents. They basically said, I, I just can't do that anymore. You get behind in physics, or whatever, some of the classes they take, you might as well write it off, especially late in the year.
Mr. Ray, you mentioned concussions were an issue this year?
We've, every year, we have seen more and more concussions. I think we're just becoming more and more aware of it. We've had fifth grade concussions from the playground. We've had kids who've had, you know, concussions. Curious, we had a student a few years ago who ran a mile, came in and fainted, while sitting down in the hallway. Sitting down, putting her head on the floor, she had a concussion. And it was out, well, it was back for full days, for over a month. You know, so when they have a concussion, we are much more aware of it. They're initially out for like a week, depending on the severity. And then when they come back, they're not there for full time, or if they are there, you know, they're not able to look at screens or read. They have to sit there and just kind of take things in. The brain injuries, and what we're doing for them nowadays, in the last couple of years, is way more than we've ever done before. The awareness, we give baselines for all our athletes, so that we can, Gary Primo comes in, they've done it at the high school for a number of years. The last couple of years, we've added middle school students, so that we know, okay, this is your baseline. You have a percussive type incident, you can have this test done again and see if you're off your baseline. And then until you're back on your baseline, you can participate in sports, and FIDE, and all those other things. So it's, it's becoming more and more of an issue for more and more kids, just because we're well aware of them.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion, second?
I move.
Who are we? Kay Walden.
Yes.
Kirsten Greenfield.
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Yes.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Patrick Clare.
Yes.
Betty Mannan.
Yes.
And Steve Shablon.
Yes.
It appears that we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.